Commissioner Joe Lockhart.
Thank you. Highway and Sanitation, Highway Department, the Public Works, all the reports are on file. When I'm done my report, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I want to touch base. Last week we talked a good bit about the recycling issues. And we got something, we're moving, we're going to try to concentrate on, you know, concentrating on three pipes, we don't know which three yet. Whatever will bring back the most, whoever knew. And me and Commissioner Radkowski had a little discussion before the meeting. He was in Florida visiting his brother, and there's an article down there, same problem down there, I mean, this recycling problem, it's nationwide. I'll keep this updated, you know, we're going to work with the highway guys, we're going to figure it out and move forward. Sure, like I said, all our reports are on file. Nothing new, they just had a busy month, this month. They average about six, seven complaints a month, they had about thirteen last month, they dealt. And that's all I have, the Summershaw Spring Book Development, we're working on that process. We're going to meet with them and see if we can help them with it. That's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Lockhart?
Joe, real quick, so I didn't get this email till 3:42 today, but we've been working, we've been working with DEEP on that technical assistance grant. So when they get the technical assistance grant, the $7,956, they put out a scope, so actually DEEP is going to send up a, it's a consultant that's going to come out and work with the highway sanitation department and us to come up with additional ways to try to save money recycling. So they're going to be looking at playoffs, they're going to be looking at, yeah, what should we be collecting, what's our overall scope for the program?
Aye, good.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just to echo what Commissioner Biaka was saying, it was just odd that I picked up this little article down in Norwood, Florida, and they call it, their issue is, it's called "Mean Recycle." And I think the main one they still wanted was collect, but I'll give you the article to you guys, it was just ironic how they have the same issues that they were saying, contaminated and stuff, and went in doubt, throw it out, it's all kinds of stuff, and it's a good article to read. They're a lot bigger than we are, other than that. The other thing I want to thank you is, the street lights up on Bethel and Mill Roads, the pedestrian walkway is lit up, I saw that tonight. I've been away for a while since I didn't know when it was put up, I thank you very much. The other thing, one of your sewer authority, Joe, you may have been around for a while on Gavitt Avenue, and I've let it be out on the report here, 1103 Gavitt Avenue issue, and it was in the main. Can we see it, Mag Green has a grease trap, because that road's never had grease.
Without water.
I'm just saying, I don't know if that's some of the issue, because it's right there, 1103 is right behind it. And if we could check to see if they had a grease trap, if it's not there, if not water.
There is water, great.
So, it's already far, but.
When's the annual inspection, the health inspection, I'll give it out there to Michelle.
So I'll check with Michelle, might I ever just do a follow-up visit?
I went to a meeting for the sewer authority, because one of our residents had an issue, and that was a concerning line, and that, I don't know why they don't address it, I don't know if they can legally, is Chitchester Avenue, they have to do constantly, and now we're starting on Gavitt Avenue, like a one-time issue or whatever, but these places all have grease, to restaurants, the grease traps, they're just, they're out there more often than their normal stuff. Is there any way they could be charged a little more, because they're being out there more, where there's different type of restaurants, that's causing this issue?
One of my complaints with this sewer authority is our maintenance program. I mean, a lot of that preventive maintenance can take care of that. How many are here already?
Thank you.
That's it?
All right, we'll move on to which Commissioner, what are your reports?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. All reports on file here at the office. The library, members of the library board, as well as our township manager, myself, and board president, met with the library on January 25th. And the focus of the library meeting was to discuss the potential of locating property within the township, and exploring options for building a library. So the location that we have identified is Kingston Park, that large area, currently is a playground there, so we are looking at the possibility of taking a part of that and building a library, doing improvements to the parking area. So we met to discuss ways in which we could get the community to buy in, and that was, Commissioner Barrios will send a letter to the residents there to gauge their interest. From there, we will expand that to the community, to talk to other wards, residents in other areas, to see what their feeling, feelings would be for a library. Right now, the library is located in the local shopping center, which is storefront, extremely small, the library has consistently grown, and is providing programs to local residents, as well as neighboring residents, and they really need to find a new location. So that's the goal for the library I'm going forward. And the board knows, I've been on the library since I was first elected as commissioner, so my initial responsibility was to represent the board commissioners. Now I am actually a board member, so I'm the vice president of the library board as a regular citizen. So I'm looking for a board member to be appointed to the library, in addition to myself being there, so someone else on the board that is going to be an active participant on the board, the library would like to have another member.
We could write a resolution to.
So we would, the library would like to have another resident, excuse me, another commissioner from the board, so please consider it and think about it for next month. Just the more, I think the more hands-on that we have, if you're not just hearing from me, we have more involvement, especially if we do decide, if we get the okay, if we decide to move forward, I think it would be important to have two individuals on the board.
Who hasn't charity yet? I did it as short-term. Here's some, I mean, send them a new place.
Laura is in the audience, just so you know, okay?
I'm sure.
Don't be all, like, jumping to get a hard word.
I had a few years, I got to work with them, I seen how they work, I think I'm somebody else. Fresh face, do you do?
So, all right, thank you.
So you drink and fight over it.
As we heard earlier this evening, the Heart and Soul Summit is scheduled for Saturday, February the 29th, it will be at the IBW Austin Room, the doors will open at 10:30 a.m., the meeting will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., everyone has information in their binder. The information has been put out on social media, I've shared it, I'm sure it's going to be on our Facebook page as well, so please share it and talk it up, so that we can, you know, get the greatest number of attendees as possible. I unfortunately have an event in Delaware that I paid for several months ago, so I will not be there, but I will definitely make sure that we get some of our residents to attend.
Questions for?
So, let's see, we just, just as far as some of the grants that we've gotten, the T, was it the TC DI grant submission for the Marcus Street Corridor, that's due next week, news due Tuesday, we just got the DCED Keystone Communities Contract, and we're writing the RFP for the Lucoin Town Center, I think that one was for $25,000, George, okay, and we saw the presentation this evening for the drone grant that we received as well. Regarding our recreation department, just some numbers from 2018, the total revenue from rentals that we, that the township had was $18,790. In 2019, we generated $41,814, with a significant increase in our rentals, and with that, those funds, we were able to, we added some additional lighting outside, we added security cameras to the community center at, on 452, and we're also in the process of adding Wi-Fi at that location as well. So we're making improvements to our, or I should say reinvesting in our, in our infrastructure. That's all I have.
Just a note, when we left, when we left the library, indicated that I wanted to put a letter out, I'm working with yours on that, hopefully I can review it tomorrow and get that out by next week, so it is moving. It was under the weather, so, but we have, I haven't forgotten about you, and I'll move forward with it, okay?
For Commissioner Whitaker, so Christian Whitaker's on the Fair Count Committee for the state, and as well as the county, just so, so next week, next month, if everybody's looking, we're looking for three to five members for a local census 2020 committee to kind of hold some events, to try and get people out for the census, so.
There's no other comments for Commissioner Whitaker, or we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Radkowski?
Thank you. Thanks for much knowing on our service. Chubbie alone, he's been quiet, my goodness. Emergency management, the head of George, they're still, they're pretty well excited about it, it's still needing new members, anybody wants free of charge, so a volunteer can involve, there's different types of emergency management. DCED study, maybe March. Street light on Bethel and Mill, we're here with that, like, the storm drains, but I'm going to go along with the ones in the bag first, if you can put the box in, we'll meet up with Lisa, and then we definitely will have to have some kind of adhesive to get to the guy's backyard, because the box is going to be in his backyard. We're hoping that we can rub in the rocks and try to put the swale back in all that fence and get it all cleared, you may not have to put a box in.
That's the fence to get all the bricks?
Yeah, and then everything was just washed down, literally, you're not going to swale back into the two storm drains that are in the backyard there already. I'm not sure if we got this answer yet, I'd still like to see, see it myself, but we still have interest to look at it. So we have it, maybe the Highway Department could have it on record up there, is the plan of Helms Manor, if there's any plans around, I'm not sure if there were showing any of these storm drains that may be in any other backyards back there, so we're not aligning when we do find them, because that's how we'll find them, all over, not just everywhere. The stop sign, I'd like to get installed, I'm going to talk to the chief of George about that, in that area.
Any news about the hump that we requested back in September?
Mark, come in.
I'll comment on that right now, we were still looking into it, we do have somewhat of a solution, but not a sour one, if there is a sour solution with any kind of humps, it'll be put on my street, street program for 2020, I want to do all the street programs. I will tell you right now, meeting with the engineer out there, if there's anything to be put out there, we're nearly to.
I, I think we're wasting our money was putting that stop sign.
Mark, Mark.
I want to add, best help, please?
Mark, I love you, brother. Look, we got citizens' comments in the beginning, I'll let you comment other new business. Let us, let us get to, let us get through to the report first, please, thank you.
The other thing on the RFPs, I just, I just don't want to be sitting around waiting and moving along, especially the town center, and I haven't got the grant, I'll sit with George to understand this a little bit, and to keep it moving. The Lorna, I'm not against this Lorna, I just think we need to get it out there. The RFP for the Lucoin Town Center, we got to keep moving, because I want to keep it in place with the project of the McKay School and the Wild Bull Project in our park, but the Lorna itself for 322, and then the board discussed it for the whole township, for just 322, I would have been understanding that, so we can keep moving. I understand, we put money in there for the budget next year, this organization that we're doing it, it's going to be doing the work, the light work for us, I just don't want to start the light work three quarters of a year, when we should have been ahead of it a little bit, if we already know, I mean, I'll meet with George, I just want, one thing, I'm not a fan of reversing stuff for government, and I just want to keep moving up, so. I think we're all excited about the Marcus Street, the Limerick pipes, the Chitchester Avenue streetscape, everything, we're just, we've been talking about it for two years, I just want to see something happen. 322, maybe one of those is a second, like, late 60s, so that's.
How about two?
And Mark, I will answer any questions you may at the end of the meeting about the stop signs.
Sure.
What I will put on record here is, that is not a throughway, 90% of the people that don't stop live in your development.
No. No.
Besides your delivery.
No, our main complaint was that Limerick pipe was.
That's all I have.
So, and what might make sense at this time, since we're coming up on working towards the, putting together the road program, which will be the funding for this, you know, maybe you'll use us at this point to ask the board to authorize having a township engineer, since they have a traffic engineer, they work with, come out, I know you went out and bought that, or maybe you actually put us together like a plausible plan, and work could be done in there? They put something on paper?
Yeah, Alex, well, well, that's why, that was my comment, some of the, which, you know, the residents come on here, or not all residents, want to come on here. Even against Alex's recommendations, he did not recommend a speed home coming into the development rated for a stop sign. By law, he stated to me, and I have the notes, and I, maybe you want me to go forward here, 150 feet from any intersection, minimal. Then, because East and West Helms Manor is only 26 feet, where we did a comparison on Friends Way, which is 32 to 34, they painted lines in their area for the curbs, he did not recommend any speed homes along the curbs, because of the danger of coming around a corner and hitting someone, or the possibility it has. We did talk about line, line strafing on each bend, on each side, just as they did on Friends Way. The difference between Helms Manor and Friends Way is 26 feet and 32 feet, it's a little wider. That would not prevent anybody from not parking there, they park over there on Friends Way at nighttime, in front of their homes, we're not going to stop them from parking on top of it, it's more intentional, you see the lines, the road, the road slows you down. That was his recommendations, I will find my notes, and if he needs to do a direct, a drive for us, we'll go with that, I'll ask him for it. That was his notes, and I do have a copy of that.
Any comments from the board for Commissioner Radkowski? Well, we'll move on to Commissioner Joe here.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, everybody. The administration and financial reports are available at the office, including the balance sheet. The trash refunds are listed in with the bills paid, so we'll announce it all at once, but I will note that there is one correction to that, that the last payment that's listed there is only $200, it's not 20620, it's, oh, I'm sorry, it's $196, because our trash payments were $100 last year, and they paid within the timeframe, so. The list of bills is in the amount of $768,647.77, I moved payment to that.
All favor?
Aye.
Any poos? I have a motion to carry.
I'd like to consider a motion accepting the resignation of Kate Carne.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And lastly, under finance, consider a motion approving the hire of Marco Benelli for the temporary position of accountant.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any poos? I have a motion to carry.
The police report is also available at the office, I'd like to consider a motion accepting the retirement request of Detective John Montgomery.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any poos? I have a motion to carry.
And finally, under, this police say, consider a motion activating the civil service to administer a hiring test for the position of patrolman.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any poos? I have a motion to carry.
And we will try to keep the board advised of any resolution on that, as to the date, you know, the advertising, and all those details, and when the tests will be, and that's all I have, thank you.
Howard, Joe, should we forget order the board, the service service board, do you like them now, or?
Yeah. Send them a letter, I saved it after I made the service service, it's all process.
Thank you.
I will wrap up with my report, and then we'll take some comments at the end. License inspection, everybody has their report in their folders, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. Planning, we could open it up all of a sudden tonight, for the extension letter, they will be, they will be presenting on March 6th. As I indicated to the board last week, they were looking for a decision that night, as our solicitor indicated, we won't be able to do that. Other commissioners may have some questions and comments, that might take a week to get resolved, so the following, so the following week, we'll be, we'll be giving the final approval. My understanding is that all of a sudden, we'll be aware of that, and they're, oh, they are okay with it also, so. Jake's fireworks, we went over that tonight, so we're not going to review that anymore, it was approved for a preliminary final. As I mentioned last week, under zoning, Tom Simpson is, was voted in his chair, Jim Holfolk, Derek Leach's chair, Gene Brumal is the secretary, we just recently appointed Howard Mosley from Commissioner Whitaker's board, and I like the board again for last week, for appointing John Markoni to represent the fifth board. There is no pending applications for the zoning board, so if something happens for next month, I would like you guys to know. My open items is for Kate Glenn, the board gave approval for our past engineer present at a town hall meeting that I will be setting up soon with the residents. I spoke with Gabe today, the individual who sent us the email about Michael Kokapi for recognition in March, I reached out to the historical side also, to do some research, to let the residents know, Michael Kokapi was a World War II veteran, was buried overseas. They recently recovered his body after seven years, and he was buried in Arlington Cemetery this past week. Our chief of police went up to attend the ceremony, so I'm trying to do something to recognize him, he's a local, he was a, he was one of our local residents, so I think it would be a nice honor to recognize his service to our country. Sound barriers, during, during our meetings, there was a couple of areas that fell short within my board, one area in particular was Florida Lane, the reason why they said they did not want to put a continuous sound barrier is because of the emergency access. It was always my understanding that that was eventually going to be closed off, and I was hoping to get sound barriers in there. So, my understanding is that emergency management does not effectively use that gate, I want to get verification on that. Worst case scenario, if, if, if they are still using it, I'd like to maybe put a roll up toward, they use that in Euclid Township, so I think that's a smart resolution to do for this area also, a plate for them to get sound barriers up, so I told our residents I would like for that. I talked to our solicitor last week about Jake Brakes, he indicated to me that if we were going to do this, that we would have to adopt a section of the road where we would like to put it up on, so I know we were meeting often about it, I know the residents back in Jennifer Way, Emily and Jody, especially along Florida Lane, have been asking me this for over the past couple of years, to get this ordinance up for Jake Brakes prohibition. So I would recommend the 322 corridor, where Jennifer Way develops, starts all the way up through Florida Lane.
Hey, you might want to add to that.
I don't know if anybody else in the board.
Larkin Road down into the Delaware State Line, 491.
So.
If we're going to do it, do both.
What we have, what we have to do is, we have to petition the Department of Transportation, identify the areas that we want these prohibitions, so I need specific identification, and then they will come out, do a study to determine whether or not it's appropriate, if they determine that it is appropriate for this prohibition under those, then we would have to pass an ordinance, and that will enable the police department to be able to enforce this.
So I identify the areas I want added, if you can identify the area that you want, and let our township manage it, I would appreciate that, appreciate that, Nicole, this probably is going to affect you also, so we can identify your area.
All of the Gavitt and Duppert.
So.
I would just move on towards that stretch of 322.
So.
Mike, I've seen these values that have Jake Brakes forbidden within municipal limits, is that something different?
They're, they're getting much more specific now, PennDOT wants specific roadways as to what you would petition them for, you just can't have universally a township petition.
So if we can decide on this, on the stretch of road tonight, I would petition the board to have our solicitor to move on with it, if.
I would suggest that you have the commissioners identify those, pass those on to the township manager, because actually the letter has to come from the township manager, we'll put together the application process, I have the forms, and then we can see, it's a process, it's going to take a little while, but I think we can, we can at least get it all rolling once we have identified.
Do you need, by identification, do you need to file a marker or?
That, whatever the most, yeah, they want specific.
I'm saying Larkin Road, the.
Well, I mean, we could say Larkin Road from the state line to wherever, yes.
Right, the state line, that I've got.
322 from the dividing line between Bethel and Upper Chitchester, the 95.
My suggestion is, we sit down with a map, and kind of go through, be a bit specific.
We do have a lot of work where truck traffic is not allowed, due to weight restrictions, however, like, it's like Mean House, that is a work that is allowed, so basically, that's a residential traffic area, you want to look at those types of things.
So I want to, I want to add, I just want to update the board, Mr. Pang, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe permits were issued to the developer to begin renovation work to the Kaye School House Building, and that type of work is consistent of putting new windows in, and weather, weatherproofing the exterior.
Right, it was solely for weatherproofing the exterior, because they were afraid that they didn't get, they would start losing the integrity of the building.
And you have reached out to the developer on other issues, to see how you can get something?
We actually received the email today, sets of plans from Robert Lynn's office, from the consultant, so they have to be those, the developer, not other than is there, but who will be doing it.
That's all I have, so is there any questions for me?
No.
So I'd like to move on to new business, and Mark, you would like to come up, state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Mark Rehan, I live in Route 55, West Helms Manor, I was here last September, and I had petitions from the residents of Helms Manor, it was signed by 54 residents, out of 64, because we have speed issues in the development, it's 15 miles on, and we got no answer, and I just, I saw that report today, that, you know, that they're just going to address the issue, the stop sign, so if the most of the residents, most of the speeding, the director's speeding, it's happening from the residents, so who going to give them the stop sign, who going to put some more money, who going to invest it in a stop sign, who going to put a stop sign in there, so they're not, they're not going to stop with the stop sign, so what's the support to install and follow a stop sign? And one of the stop signs is going to be right in front of my house.
And I, and I think that's.
Right, right, right in front of my house.
And I think, and I think that's, you're going to want a request for this, you don't want to want.
No, we did not, but the petition, the petition was signed for the humps, it was not signed for the stop sign. Helms Manor should have the stop sign 20 years ago, you only have one stop sign. My, our main complaint, our main complaint was, our main complaint is, that delivery drivers, the truck, we get every day.
Did you think, did you think they're going to stop for speed humps?
Do you think, if the most resident, if the most speed, so they think they're going to stop with the stop sign? How many of you think that the resident that caused problems in the speed, in Helms Manor, they're going to stop when they see the new stop sign? in Hells Manor, they're going to stop when they see that there's a stop sign? Seriously? I, I wanted to obtain, I wanted to obtain a copy of the, the recommendation was made from the interior, it said 150 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to obtain that report if I can, please?
Okay, I don't have to, because in 2019, they were expecting 95.
Yeah, but I want to see, I want to see the recommendations, because there is a lot of things here that doesn't apply to, to rest of the, the, as I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of humps in, in Hells Manor, but I don't see 155, 150.
A lot of humps.
There is a lot of humps installed in Upper Shasta, and I don't see 150 feet...
And the humps that were put in on Agadag or Delaware or throughways, you're in the development to go through.
You're in the development, it's 15 miles an hour, or maybe bringing, people speeding up to 35 miles an hour, I got a camera, I can, I can bring with you, we see these.
You know, it's all 15.
Next week, 15, and we can, we can see, we can see actually a few, the police can enforce it at 15 miles an hour.
Can I comment, please?
Sure.
So I know you want these speed tables in there.
I, I know, there's only solutions, but right now, we're going to invest, we're going to good, we're going to waste money, we're going to hire a company to install four stop signs, we have to meet the purpose.
Can I, can I please speak, Mark?
Go ahead.
I know you want the speed tables in there. Commissioner Kowski looked at it, we had our engineer look at it, there's certain things that has to be met in order to put the speed, in order to put speed tables, put speed humps in. If it's a windy road, I don't know if we, if, if, if we can do it. So, you know, I can talk to our engineer again, we can revisit it, I would more than happy to get you a copy of the report, but if...
So if I...
If the, if the report says we can't do it because it doesn't meet certain standards, I can't admit it. I, I will try, I, I, I will try to do my best, Mark. Commissioner Kowski will try to do his best, you know, I don't know how to put the stop signs up for, 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 for right now, but, you know, I'm trying to work with you, Commissioner Kowski is trying to work, work, work with people, so...
If I do get the...
We don't, we do not have to put the stop sign by your house, instead of a three-way stop, it'd be a two-way stop.
Sorry?
That's it, I mean, we're not, if I'm not mistaken, I think we try signage first, and then we do other traffic counts.
But it's, it's just that 90% of residents in Hells Manor, that's only speaking.
And George, they're not even going to stop at the stop sign. They're not even going to stop at the stop sign, Mark.
Okay, so why would we put a stop sign then?
It's a lot easier for them to issue a violation for a stop sign than it is for speeding.
Well, that's why I came up with the solution, this hot speed hump.
So if people start to get violations, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to start to stop the stop sign.
Chief is not going to be able to enforce 15 miles an hour, is he?
Chief doesn't have a radar to be able to enforce 15 miles an hour. At the current time, townships cannot utilize radar, that would be the most effective way. Right now, the most effective way as a deterrent is to issue a citation for a violation of a stop sign. They stop fine, if they don't, then they get a citation, believe me. Once that starts to happen, I would venture to say that your problems are going to diminish significantly, or they're going to be back before the board of commissioners to remove the stop signs. So let's take it one step at a time and see what happens.
Mark, I understand that the majority of residents sign for it, but again, please understand that there's certain standards that have to be met.
Yeah, but I, that's why I would like to get a copy of the report before I walk out, please, and I think I'm entitled to get that.
Yeah, but I'm just, let me finish my statement, I understand that the majority sign for it, but if there's, but if there's certain standards that can't be met, then we can't install, Mark.
Well, I'm going to get education now, I'm back.
Yeah.
But I just like to get a copy of the report, please, I recommend it.
We'll get you that.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thank you. Any other new business? Have a motion to adjourn?
No.
And, and, all right, come on up.
Pam, Andrew, 2403 Davis Creek Road, did you say they're going to put the, since I'm here, the compression brake things from duffers on up?
We're just trying to identify streets that would...
Ours is one, my side has actually moved my neighbor's stuff to the back of our house because she can't sleep because of the noise, and they start at 2200 block, right about in front of Joey DiMarco's house, and then they go all the way up to Lake...
We know, he tells us.
Up Bad Out or wherever, and they try and stop at that red light.
I think I spoke up, said Davis Creek Road, by the way.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All the records, have a motion to adjourn?
Some, some...
All favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you.